I'm going to call the work session in the Springfield City Council to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Webber.
Here.
Councillor Mo. Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Blackwell.
Here.
Councillor Doyle.
Here.
And Councillor Pishanary.
Here, thank you.
All right, we have two work session items this evening. The first is the Springfield Fiscal Stability Task Force. With Nate.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Back in a September work session, I brought to you a five-year forecast and asked for guidance on how you'd like to address a persistent structural imbalance in our general fund. The mayor asked that staff put together a committee charge for a mayor's task force that would look at city finances and services and provide recommendations to the council for addressing that structural imbalance. The guidance from that evening was that they take a holistic approach, so not just focus on expenditures in the service level side of things, but also to include revenues and economic development and legislative initiatives. And there was also guidance to come up with a list of questions that we would want answered by this committee. In your packet is that committee charge and about midway through that charge, I have a section on deliverables and then bulleted area of areas that we would want feedback from that committee. My question to you this evening is, do those bulleted areas get you the information that you're going to need to inform your conversations on their recommendations? And is there any other additional information that you want me to include in this committee charge?
Calling.
So I have a few comments and I don't know that it goes into the charge. But first of all, I appreciate this. I'm glad we're moving forward with it and I'm really glad that we're again, you know, trying to get feedback on this. I think. One, it would be helpful. Because I see you say up in there, you're like about the like time implementation, the one to two, the three to five, the greater than five. So I think that's going to be an important thing to look at because I, you know, I always want us to like be future focused. So what can we do in the short term and set some parameters around what that looks like in terms of, is there going to be a five-year plan? What does that look like? So that's a piece is like, I feel like that's important. And then while I was talking about that, I forgot what my other piece was. So I'm going to turn it over and see if it comes back to me.
All right, anybody else? All right, so Joe.
Thank you, Mayor. No, I appreciate, I think it's actually put together well, Nate, thank you. And to me, I think that looks like a good path for us to follow and easily followed, I believe, by a committee. And I think the. I wouldn't necessarily want them to think that we want to look at a plan that is, you know, long strategic plan. I think the a plan that they can come up with or suggestions they can come up with sooner rather than later just because of the timing of our current levies. So. But otherwise, I think it looks great. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I remember what my other piece was. One of the things that I don't, again, don't think it needs to be in the charge, but just as they get together, because I won't be there, a lot of, we won't be here, is to look at other cities and not necessarily, like we always are like, well, what is Eugene doing? But I would be really interested if there's time to dig into like, what are some other cities in other areas? How are they looking at this? Because I know this is a conversation across the state. And so it would be helpful to just get some different ideas outside of our region, because there might be something that fits Springfield that maybe Clement Falls or Astoria or someplace is doing. So if there's any way to set them up to kind of look at that and not necessarily be like, what exactly is going on next door?
And just to respond to that, you know, what we put together, we will tailor to be uniquely Springfield. But you're correct in that other cities are dealing with the same challenges. Eugene has a task force that started back in December and I think is still active right now, just looking at the revenue side of things. And then Salem also did a similar task force. And so I'll be looking at both what those communities have done and for ideas to kind of inform our process as well.
Victoria.
Thanks so much for putting this together. My question is, has to do with how you're choosing the people that are going to be on this committee and.
That's my department. Sorry, couldn't, was it? So the invites are going out in probably mid-November. We're going to send out the folks there that are a letter. I'm planning on sending out 12 of them, thinking that we're going to get seven to nine people that are going to commit to this. When we have, so right now, we've got from an expertise perspective, we've got somebody from the Budget Committee, somebody from the banking industry, somebody from the timber industry, somebody from the healthcare industry, somebody from the chamber, somebody from one of the local unions. I don't think if I missed somebody there, but a broad swath. So if you have more suggestions for people, definitely interested in hearing them.
Yeah, no, I was just curious how that list was compiled because we didn't hear anything about it. And so it sounds like you just sort of came up with that? Are you and the Council President or?
Yeah, so that, from a from a from a committee perspective, right, like we were doing it as a task force. So frankly, like I get to choose who gets to be on there. The reason why we did it that way was to sort of speed how fast we can get this thing started. And then as I've come up with names, you know, I've talked to several folks that were on the council to just basically solicit feedback. So there is an opportunity and excuse me. There is an opportunity for us to, you know, look for additional folks if that's what needed to get a, get a well-rounded view from the community. Basically, the thing I'm looking for is technical skills, right, to really understand the conversation, people who are bought into this community that have, you know, have a desire for this community to succeed. And then, you know, just basically a broad swath from the community. All right, Nancy.
I wanted to go back and address Councillor Rodley's question regarding what are other cities doing? I'm aware that currently the League of Oregon Cities is looking at this issue as well. So that would be another resource that we would want to reach out to because they've done some preliminary work in that regard.
Anybody else have comments? Okay, so from a timing perspective, the couple of things that I had was the invites are going out in November, so we'll have a final list of what the committee is looking like, probably late November, early December. Keep me honest here, Nate, I would think the first meeting's probably going to be after the first of the year. That's the current plan. And then the question for where the council could weigh in would be, how much report back or would be helpful? You know, go ahead.
First of all, are these going to be like noticed in public meetings?
Yes, it is a public meeting.
So people can watch it or they might take testimony and things like that, which would be maybe helpful?
No, it's not required that they have the ability to take or provide, people have the ability to provide testimony, but it would be open to the public to observe.
Okay, because that's helpful, because then if I wanted to lurk about and watch, I could. I think for me, when you say how much report back, this is going to go through June, so it would be helpful just to have something like pre-budget. Because we do our budget in May, so I wouldn't need to know every month what's happening, but like here's where we're at going into the budget discussions, maybe.
Yeah, like, yeah, just a flyby, if you will, about some sort of update in between before we start the budget conversation. Okay. Go ahead, Joe.
I think you either failed to mention or will suggest somebody from the hospitality industry.
That's who I forgot. Thank you. Yes, somebody from the hospitality industry. Okay, Nate, did we get everything covered?
I believe so.
I guess the one thing I would note that was being the charge is the only thing that is listed as out of scope is is the fire governance conversation, which I think, you know, when yeah, yeah, exactly. But I, going into this, everything is going to be on the table. All right.
And just for one point of clarification to what Councillor Rodley asked for, we can provide a report back in terms of just progress and maybe some of the kind of early ideas that are being put forward. But we're approaching this on a parallel sort of track along with putting together the fiscal year 26 budget. We're going to be starting that in December. We'll pretty much have that wrapped up by February because it'll then take time for us to put together the document that comes to you for the Budget Committee. So we're not looking to this task force to come up with any solutions that we're going to use to balance our fiscal year 26. It's really looking in those outer years that we hope to get some outcomes.
Can I hop in? Yeah, and I understand that. I think it's just, we always go in, we always start to like spiral a little bit when we're talking about that, the the structural imbalances. And it might be just interesting to just be like, okay, we're looking at revenue in this ways or whatever. Because we do, when we go through the budget process, we do look out and, you know, you do your forecasts. It always just makes us all want to cry. So it might be helpful to just have a little bit of that, but I understand that it won't be necessarily informing this year's budget or 26 budget.
Okay, sure.
Just to clarify, as it relates to both updates and kind of where council is going to be asked to weigh in on the discussion or the recommendations, what is your, kind of what is your expectation there?
So whatever the, whatever comes out of this committee, right, is going to come directly to council as the starting point for our conversation. So we will get both, you know, a a report that comes out of it and we'll probably invite the, I would imagine, we would invite the committee here to sort of talk to us about, what did they talk about? Why? What is their thinking, et cetera, et cetera? Once we get that report, then we're going to talk through whatever that means and decide what goes forward, what doesn't, what we want to direct the city manager to implement. So we would get their body of work, get to talk to them and then get to decide how we want to act as a, as a body.
So just, just getting, we don't necessarily want council to influence that conversation before the end of the timeframe, right? We want to make sure that that committee gets its opportunity to to digest and discuss and get to the end of that with the recommendations.
I think it would be best if, you know, because the goal coming into this committee is to get everything on the table, give citizens a chance to just weigh in, is to do as little as possible about, until we see the work product and then we'll have a lot of time to kind of weigh in and decide what we want to do. Go ahead, Victoria.
And just another thing, I'm just curious, it does, it's not on here, but are they going to be looking at anything like citywide procedural ways of of cutting costs? Are they not looking at the city's like structure of how they have the planning and public works together and that type of thing that for cost savings?
You know, we're going, we don't have any predetermined outcomes at the onset. So that's kind of thing one. I think it's important that this committee understands that this is a very open process. So those kinds of discussions could come up based on where the conversation goes. We will be providing them information to help give them context and background, similar to what Nathan does for you all when we start the budget process to talk about the history of funding with the city and the things that we have done in the, in the past. And then we will, you know, so they'll get some background materials that will help lay the groundwork for their discussion. And then if they want to have, you know, like say they have a question about a department and want to have somebody come and present to them, then, you know, we we can talk to them about that and give them the tools they need in their decision-making process.
And just to clarify, so this committee will come to us sometime in June with their findings to present to us. Is that correct before recess?
Yes, it's a plan right now. Leaving it open to the possibility that when the committee comes together, they may have an idea of what type of timeline that they'd like to give in terms of their time. But as it's currently scheduled, you know, we're looking at meetings scheduled from January through May, providing staff with some time to put together a report for the committee to proof that report and then get something to you before you go on your summer recess.
All right, I think we're good. Thank you, Nate.
Thank you.
All right, next item is temporary RV occupancy update with Katie.
Good evening, everybody. Katie Carroll, Housing Analyst for the city, here to give you an update on the city's temporary allowance for occupying RVs on private property and to get some direction on how the council would like to move forward. And we also have Charlie Kent here from Code Enforcement to help answer any questions you all may have from their perspective. Am I? Okay. Oh, sorry. You'd think I hadn't been here before. Okay, perfect. So first some background. In October of 2020, the council adopted a resolution that suspended, temporarily suspended enforcement of development and municipal code provisions that otherwise would not allow someone to occupy an RV on private property within the urban growth boundary. And so what that allowed for was for RVs to be used as temporary housing when they're parked on private property and in compliance with a set of guidelines the council adopted that cover topics like citing trash, sanitation facilities, those sorts of topics. This does not apply to RVs that are located in the right-of-way, in manufactured dwelling parks, in campgrounds or that are participating in the overnight parking program. And the council originally adopted this to respond to displacement from the Holiday Farm Fire, to the COVID pandemic and to the regional shortage of housing. In May of 2022, the council checked in on the program and directed staff to continue it for another year and asked to have staff bring back an estimate of how many RVs were being used in this way. So staff came back in September of 2022 with some options for collecting that data. The most feasible seemed to be the registration system just based on capacity. And so council directed staff to put that in place. So to that end, in December of 2022, the council adopted an updated resolution with the guidelines now requiring folks to register with the city to host an RV. And then council asked staff to come back and report back in fall of 2023. So staff provided a communication packet with updated information on the registration, so registration data and then also results of a survey that we put together as part of that registration. So when someone registers to host an RV, we collect information for the RV occupant and send that survey out. So we were able to report on that fall of last year. At that time, we did not have updated code enforcement data due to a staffing shortage in the program and resulting a backlog of complaints. So talking a little bit about the data that we have, the city collects three kinds of data related to RV occupancy on private property. So code enforcement complaints, property owner registrations, and then those occupants surveys. There are limitations to this data that I'll highlight briefly that are also outlined in the memo. So kind of the big takeaway with that is that we're limited in terms of staff capacity and other city priorities. So it's we don't really have the data that would give a more complete picture of how many RVs are being occupied in this way and whether or not all those RVs are in compliance with the guidelines. But we do know anecdotally that there are more RVs being used in this way than what's being captured by this data. So looking first at code enforcement complaints, this number, the 37 complaints is from December of 2022, when we started that registration requirement through the end of September of this year. And what this captures is any complaint where in the summary, so like the, what the complaint is, it talks about an occupied RV. And at at the time of the complaint, only one of these addresses was registered with the city to host an RV. So what that tells us is that we're not getting complaints about RVs that are in compliance with the guidelines, because we only had one of those that was registered. Something I do want to point out is that complaints are not the same thing as violation. So violation is determined when code enforcement actually goes out and looks at an issue and determines whether or not the RV would be in compliance with the guidelines. And that information about violations is basically just really prohibitive for us to be able to collect, given the staff time it would take to pull that data out. Additionally, something I think that's important about this particular data is that code enforcement is prioritizing its response to the most egregious complaints that deal with health or safety issues. So often complaints about RVs do not sort of rise to that health or safety concern. So they're being addressed as resources allow. Some good news about all of that, though, we are getting new code enforcement software. I think the council maybe has been briefed on this in the past. And once that's put into place, we'll be able to drill into some of that code enforcement data more precisely moving forward. So being able to see violations, not just code complaints. But again, that will be forward-looking data, not looking backwards. So the second type of data that we collect are these property owner registrations. So this registration system is available both for people that are currently hosting an RV or for people that are interested in doing it and just want to kind of cross their Ts. So since December of 2022, when we started that registration system, we've had 33 addresses registered with the city, 24 of those indicating that they were currently hosting an RV on their property. And then finally, these occupant surveys. So every time someone that registers saying they're hosting an RV says that I'm currently hosting one, we collect contact information for the RV occupant and send out this survey. It's also available on the website, though, so there may not be kind of a precise matchup between registrations and survey responses. We've received 20 of those survey responses so far. The full results of those are attachment two in your packet and there is an open-ended response there. I think we have about 10 open-ended responses if you're interested in looking at those. Kind of big highlights of that is most people that responded to the survey said they were not displaced by the Holiday Farm Fire. So where that might have been something that was happening more when the council first put this in place, not as many people still being impacted by that. Most people responded that they do have access to water, electricity, sanitation facilities and garbage on the property. And then responses about whether or not folks were paying rent was more divided. About half people said they weren't and about half said that they were or sometimes were paying rent. So then turning to some options. So the reason that I'm before you with some options is in the past, the council had indicated that it wanted to gather some more information and then revisit its options for moving forward with this temporary allowance. So I'm going to present sort of a range of options and then some considerations with each of those. This first option would just be to continue as-is, which would be this resolution that suspends enforcement of provisions that otherwise wouldn't allow RV occupancy. Code enforcement doesn't really have any suggested changes to the guidelines. If council wants to go this direction, however, county staff has reached out and said it would be helpful to clarify that an RV can't be parked over a septic system because that can cause damage. So if council wants to move forward with this option, we would just bring back amended guidelines with that addition for your consideration. This system is a little bit more challenging for code enforcement to do its work with because they don't have any code provisions that they can cite to. So if it's an issue that's covered somewhere else in the code, like maybe excess trash outside of the RV, code enforcement's able to address that. But if it's something like this registration requirement that isn't in the code, there's nothing for them to cite to and subsequently defend in court if they were to need to. And this just creates more of a black and white pathway of enforcement. So rather than focusing on bringing people into compliance, it creates this more like occupancy, the RV can't be allowed. Okay, so then option two would be to allow RV occupancy by ordinance. So this would be folding this into the municipal code. There are a few different ways this could be done. So staff would schedule a subsequent work session with council if it wanted to explore this option further and kind of weigh the different ways that we could do this. What I do know at this point is that the guidelines could be folded into the code or they could still be adopted separately via resolution, which would make them easier for council to amend. And then either way, the council could put a sunset provision into this if it wanted to explore putting this into the code. If council went this direction, we would need to talk with Lane County about how to manage this in the urbanizable area because the city cannot afford, enforce municipal code in the urbanizable area without an intergovernmental agreement with the county. And then this would be easier for code enforcement to do its work because there would be language that they could cite to in the code. However, it doesn't impact the capacity of the code enforcement team, so that's still a limiting factor there. And then finally, the third option would be to end the temporary RV occupancy allowance. So code enforcement would just resume enforcing the code provisions that we already have in place that would mean that this isn't an allowed use. If the council wants to go this direction, staff is suggesting at least six months to sunset the allowance to give us time to reach out and let property owners that have registered know and just do some wider community noticing. There is potential with this option that the city could see increased code enforcement calls as people learn that this isn't an allowed use anymore. And it may also push some folks into the right-of-way, which would then become the jurisdiction of the police department to address. And so that is what I had for you all. Happy to take any questions and move towards this.
Joe.
Thank you, Sean. Mayor, sorry. So just to, for, to put it in context, most everybody, a lot of folks in this room were not here when this was crafted. And it was crafted specifically addressing the, our, the fires that we were experiencing in September of that year. And coupled with COVID, that's correct. It was, it was basically a crisis thing and the COVID was, was in answer to many businesses shutting down and people getting laid off and jobs, folks just losing their jobs. And people were scrambling to be able to find places to live and unable to pay rents, et cetera. So it was put together in regards to as an emergent response for a crisis. And it, I believe it actually worked quite well and it served its purpose for that. That being said, and I think, you know, I agree. I agree, I agree with you, Katie. And when it comes to your suspicions, or at least it's my suspicions as well, that the responses to the survey were deemed that the influence by the conditions that have changed more currently as opposed to when they were first, when it was first brought up, the allowances were allowed. So I think that the, the weather system is completely different. And I, and I, so I don't think the survey shows relative information or information that would be directly relative for the reason for the allowance was placed in the first place. So I, I support ending the allowance. It was a temporary allowance. In fact, it was only supposed to go a year. But conditions changed, so we extended it and kicked the can down the road. But we're past that now. I don't see the emergent need. It's not supposed to be a permanent fix to housing. So I would recommend that we end it and go with the six-month sunset and move forward from there and reset the clock on, on, on our current ordinances without this variance.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious to this, if, if this was to go away, if we we agreed upon it going away, does the city have any other kind of policy or or an incentive allows for some type of special use permit in the case of like a caretaker or someone's house burns down? Maybe it's not holiday fire, but some instance, is there anything that's?
So there's a medical hardship allowance in the code that I think Sandy would be better able to address specific reasons, but there, I do know one component of that is someone needs to have a doctor's note from a medical professional as part of it. So it's, it's a higher bar to reach for that. But it does involve, I believe, a registration. Mark, never mind, Mark's coming up.
Come up, Mark, please, because I think more of us have that same question.
Great. Basically, Katie answered your question, I think, quite well. That is true that there is an existing provision in the code to allow for medical hardship. to allow for medical hardship, RV use that preexisted. It was always the case prior to this exemption being in place. So somebody can apply. I don't, I'd have to look at the code for sure. I don't think it's a discretionary use permit. It's actually fairly straightforward process, but they do have to provide that documentation. And I think there's a small fee. I don't think it's very large.
All right, anybody else? Victoria?
So I know I wasn't here when this was put in place, and I understand what the reasoning was for it. But I do think we also have to consider that the economy and things have also changed, and we're, we are dealing with some issues where uh multiple families are living together. And um, I found it interesting that only one of the complaints in it, in the uh um information that you gave us was actually one of the ones that was registered. I would be more um inclined to lean towards option two, making this, making it codified and allowing people um and not pushing them out to the street. And allowing people on their own property and city limits that want to house um family or whoever um to be able to do so, um but to have guidelines and to have it codified so that we have a means by which to um actually have code to refer to in terms of um violations. So that is just my feeling on it.
Thanks. Um, so I think that um, a- and I, I was like, where do, where do I enter this conversation? Uh, I think that recently, um, because I was looking at like, what would it look like in terms of, you know, coordinating with Lane County? And I think that Lane County at finally recently, um, and if I'm lying, somebody can tell me I'm lying, um, has had passed an ordinance or an order or whatever they do so that people could have RVs on property in the county areas. And it took a while to get there. Um, you know, I agree with Councilor Doyle. I think that maybe the conversation has changed in terms of, at first it felt like this immediate reaction to the um, the fires. However, we get to see these, like, the numbers of um, and the, the, the work that's coming down from the state, from the governor, to try to get people into transitional housing, um, get roofs over people's head, get people sheltered and, and expanding that. Now, there's conversations about how do we expand the car camping? Just what, what does it look like to make sure that people are not on the streets? And I think if we're going to do that responsibly, moving it to, into ordinance makes sense because then we're getting better data and we have rules and it's less loosey-goosey. Um, and I, and I'm totally open to having a sunset provision, or we come back and revisit a provision. Uh, because hopefully we're gonna, you know, make a dent in some of the, the unhoused and be able to not have this be an ongoing thing. But I, I'm, would like to lean towards two.
Yeah, I don't even think this is, I mean, maybe some of it is the unhoused, but I think that we also are just seeing that people aren't making enough money and that families are having to combine, that, you know, kids are having to stay at home and parents are having to move in with their kids and things like that. So I don't think this is necessarily all about homelessness. I think it's also just about the family dynamic and the cost of living today and trying to buy a home and that, you know, we are blessed in Springfield to have larger lots than they do in Eugene. Um, and so um, I just want to look at it from that point as well, that it's not just about homelessness.
Michelle?
Okay, just a, just a few things after kind of hearing what people's thoughts are. Um, so either way, no matter what we do, it sounds to me like it's a strain on code enforcement based on staffing issues, so it doesn't really matter which option we pick in that regard, right? It's, it's an issue no matter what. Um, I appreciate Counselor Pictionary's comment that this was not intended to be a solution to the housing crisis. Um, but the reality is, to Counselor Doyle's point, we do have families that are struggling, right? And people, I, I, I have a hard time pushing more people out onto the street. If we can find a way to not do that, I would prefer to do that, but I do want to make sure that we're, you know, we're not causing our neighbors um frustrations and, and concerns. And, you know, I, I mean, we need to definitely keep some, some um guardrails around that and, and set some expectations for people to, to follow our, you know, our our expectations on how, how things work and how they how they behave and be good neighbors and all of those things.
I just wanted to ask a question because I wrote a note. If we went with number two and we went through the process of creating an ordinance, is there a public hearing that goes along with that?
If we got that far.
If we got that far?
Yeah, you could, um, it's probably not required by the charter or statute, but if um, it would certainly be done at an open meeting. It would require the two readings, so there would be business from the audience opportunities for sure. And then um leadership could direct us to have a public hearing as well.
Okay, thank you.
Joe.
Thank you. Uh, I appreciate what's being said, and I'm not ignorant to that condition and those type of circumstances that people are suffering. I, I do understand and I do uh sympathize with that. Um, however, I'm looking at the, the data, and we've got, we had a total of thirty-three registrations citywide. So we already know, I, I can say confidently that we've got more than thirty-three RVs sitting on private properties, number one. So we don't, we don't have compliance there. Number two is that we have almost half of them are being charged rent, which is counter to what we put in place. You're not allowed to charge rent, but yet people are getting charged rent. And then I'm looking from the code enforcement perspective, and it is, it is almost impossible for them to do anything about it um as far as enforcement's concerned. It's, it's, it's from the eyes of enforcement, it's either they should be allowed or not allowed. And if they're allowed, then I start looking from the neighborhood perspective in regards to people that are next doors to a place that has an RV parked there and got the sewer hooked up and electrical and water, et cetera. And then you have neighborhoods that believe that anything is okay, and now they're faced with looking at RVs in their neighborhood. And they may not even be registered, and they not even, they may not even be in compliance. So to me, it's, it's, we either have it or we don't. And if we have it, I don't know how you're going to construct it or cut, uh, put it together to where it's going to be easily managed. So far, there's been hardly any compliance whatsoever, and good luck on that. So I, I need to, we need to look at it from a higher perspective as, as opposed to, you know, the other people it's affected by what we are allowing. So that's, again, that's why I oppose that. I'm looking at property values, everything. It's, 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 it's got a lot of different waves out there or a triple effect to the neighborhoods, too.
Victoria?
RVs are allowed to be parked next, or on a person's RV pad, aren't they, whether they're being used or not?
Yeah, I, are there limits? I'm unsure that limit.
They can't be in the front yard setback. They would have to be tucked back basically behind the front of the house.
Yeah, so like on the RV pad, on the side of a house.
That's right.
Okay. And didn't you say that it, the reason, one of the most difficult things about code enforcement was that there isn't a mechanism for them to verify the registration, right? There isn't something to them to call to.
Yeah, I mean, that what happens is, and I can be corrected if I'm wrong here, but that they send out a letter and says, hey, you need to register for this. But beyond that, if someone didn't register, there's not really anything to go back and have teeth with that.
But there would be if we, it was codified and they had something to.
Yeah, I think that's something we could explore that we've talked about some.
And if I could just add to that, and Charlie's here if we need his backup for code enforcement, but um part of the issue, even if we do have an ordinance in place to rely on, it's a priority prioritization issue. As Counselor Pictionary referred to, just priority wise in terms of all the different code enforcement complaints we get. Um, they would likely, a lot of them would fall to the bottom of the priority list, so it'd still be difficult to get to them all, to address them all.
Okay, I was just trying to, I was trying to figure out if people are complaining about somebody having an RV on their RV pad that, whether it's occupied or not. I mean, I don't, it, it sounds like there was thirty-three in the last two years. Um, and I don't know what those complaints specifically were on, but I'm just, I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around how that's different, like.
One, one of the things we see with occupied RVs is an RV is not built or intended to be lived in as a dwelling, and they, they break down quicker with that intense level of use. They're built and meant for recreational occupancy, so when somebody lives in them full-time, they deteriorate.
All right. Um, I think there's enough support among council here to, to schedule actual work session, have a further discussion. That's, that, that's pretty clear about it. Here's my, um, when I read the pack and I had a couple of concerns that jumped out, one of them was that the RVs really are not intended to be permanent shelter for folks. And I recognize that we were in the, in a housing crisis and that we've got, you know, and I thought council did a very good job of describing what different families go through and trying to, and I'm listening for that sort of balance that said, okay, this isn't, this isn't, this was really intended to be an emergency uh response to a situation versus, you know, a, a permanent situation where we're, we're adding permanent housing. So that's one thing I'm, I'm kind of looking for. I think the other question that would be helpful in recognizing that that you're talking about people's homes and you're talking about privacy here, but if we could get a couple of examples, if, you know, a picture of something, what that um, that we're actually sort of seeing in neighborhoods and how this is actually being executed, I think that would be probably helpful for this discussion. Um, and then yeah, I mean, I, I think we, we want to start with those couple of, you know, a couple of questions. Um, and then the other piece that I'm thinking about is if we codify the program, right? Is that how much, what is our tolerance for having, you know, more RVs out there? There's thirty-five registered today. And if, you know, if we codify the program, are we talking about a thousand out there? Are we talking about fifteen hundred out there, right? Like, what is, what, what is our tolerance through our neighborhoods to sort of address that, that broader issue? And I don't know how we work through it, but I think you work through that conversation in, in a work session. And um, and I think lastly would be more information from PD. From the information we have today, it does not sound like our, I guess it would be code enforcement since it's on private property. It does not sound like we're actually, we've actually responded to any um code complaint specific to something that had permit to work. Did I read that right? Uh, a permit?
Like registered with?
Yeah, with the, with the program.
Yeah, I mean, there've been a few that subsequently someone registered. Um, so, yeah, but there's just the one that had been registered at the time.
Okay. I'm, I'm seeing a head nod from code enforcement in the back, so I think that's the signal that we got it right. Um, yeah, like if we can, and then I'm sure you, you're going to have a set of questions that we would have to discuss to come up with a if it was going to turn into a program and just give us a little, it sounds like we just need a little bit more space to run at this a little bit and figure out where we, where we want to land.
All right, that sounds good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That was the last item. So we are adjourned until seven o'clock, until seven o'clock. I'm going to call the Springfield City Council, ready for session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon, here.
Counselor Weber.
Here.
Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Blackwell.
Here.
Counselor Doyle.
Here.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Here.
Are you showing me in the pledge? There are two times designated for public testimony this evening under public hearings and business from the audience. If you are attending in person, please complete the request to speak card located at the front council chambers and turn them into the city recorder. If you're joining us with tablet, smartphone, or computer and wish to speak at either of those times, please use the raise hand or hand feature in Zoom. The order of public testimonies is as follows. Anyone in the council chambers and then anyone with a raised virtual hand. First item, please.
Mayor, the first item is the consent calendar.
Might make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Neil, could you call a vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Blackwell.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
Aye.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Yes.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero nos. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearings. You have two public hearings this evening. Public hearing number one is annexation of territory to the city of Springfield. Annex at twenty-two foot wide by approximately one thousand two hundred twenty foot long linear panhandle driveway located at five-three-five-three Ivy Street. That's map eighteen dash zero-two dash zero-four dash zero-zero and portion of tax slot three oh seven. This is ordinance number one, an ordinance annexing certain territory vacant panhandle extension of property formerly addressed as five-three-five-three Ivy Street and identified as assessor's map eighteen dash zero-two dash zero-four dash zero-zero and portion of tax lot three zero seven to the city of Springfield and Willamlane Park and Recreation District, withdrawing the same territory from the Willikenzie Rural Fire Protection District, adopting a severability clause and providing an effective date. This is a first reading. No action this evening, and Andy Limbert is here for this item.
Thank you, Neil. Um, because the staff person who's responsible for the PowerPoint didn't get it to Allison in time. I'm going to get her to assist me with a uh map spring view of the property that's uh proposed for annexation. This is a twenty-two foot wide strip of land that was essentially on the border between the previous Pinehurst subdivision on the east, which is fully developed, and the developing Woodland Ridge neighborhood on the west. Counselors may be asking, why are we here? Why haven't, we've seen this annexation of this area before. Um, unfortunately, at the time that the bulk of the Woodland Ridge property was annexed, it was under a different ownership. And the owner did not wish to participate in annexation at that time. Since the main body of the Woodland Ridge neighborhood to the west has been annexed, the developer of that neighborhood has acquired the property. Uh, the portion that contains or contained an existing residential dwelling was already annexed, so it's just the driveway essentially, um, twelve hundred and twenty feet long approximately, that is a gap between the two neighborhoods, the one that's developed and one that's developing. It is necessary to annex this property for a couple of reasons. Firstly, the extension of Pinehurst Street and Holly Street are necessary to complete the transportation infrastructure for Woodland Ridge. There are utilities that are stubbed out in the Pinehurst neighborhood necessary to be extended westward to serve the future development phases of Woodland Ridge. And it's not desirable to have a twenty-two foot gap that is essentially kind of a no man's land uh between development phases. So this allows the area to be incorporated within the subdivision area for Woodland Ridge. Staff did post the site. Uh, there was notification provided to the neighborhood. Um, undoubtedly, the neighborhood is familiar with a number of the development applications that have been um submitted recently, so there was no response provided, um, either written comments or any telephone calls. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, but uh this will essentially complete the uh development framework for uh Woodland Ridge to allow the public streets to be extended. And there's a, a map um showing this linear area uh that will be incorporated into future development phases of Woodland Ridge neighborhood.
Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Andy, the, this driveway, of course, it's a north-south driveway, and then the residence at the, if you can move the map down just a little bit, or somebody can, the uh, the red, thank you. That residence that's on a island or appearance of an island to the north, that one, yes. So I, as far as access and future access, it's a rather large piece of property. It looks like it may potentially could be subdivisible because of the square footage of that property. Um, access that property is at that, the north, or is that that west-east block on the north end of the, of fifty-fourth, South Fifty-Fourth? That they will have access to that property, or at least enough access to uh get into that land if it's gets subdivided?
Sure. Um, you are correct, uh, Counselor Pictionary. The property that you're pointing out um is going to be incorporated within um, I believe it is phase seven of Woodland Ridge. It will be subdivided into lots. Uh, South Fifty-Fourth Street will be extended northward and arc westward to join up with uh what is referred to as um Cedarview Drive, which is extending from the west to the east. Uh, so that will complete a transportation link uh within. So that will complete a transportation link within kind of the southwest corner of that property. The 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 house will not be retained on the site. So the the lot will be further subdivided or divided up into residential development lots. Counselors may be familiar with a land exchange that was brought forward a couple of weeks ago, several weeks ago now, by the city surveyor. There's a rectangular piece of property at the northern end of South Fifty-Fourth Street. That's right-of-way council agree, I believe, agreed to disposition of that to allow for future extension of Holly Street and Pinehurst Street. And that area would be eligible for incorporation into the development area. So South Fifty-Fourth Street will be extended northward and then and then curve westward in this area.
Okay, thanks, Andy. I figured someone would be addressing that for sure, but I just hate to have to come back to this down the road and still have to do more work to it. So thanks, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Yeah, you, it's a good thing to point out the the staff and the developer didn't want to leave any potentially developable portions isolated or orphaned in this, and that essentially completes the picture for that for that area of Springfield once it's all developed.
All right, any other questions? All right, then I think we're ready for the public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. I don't have any cards for this item. Neil, do we have anybody online?
I don't see any hands for this item.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. This is first reading only, no action tonight. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing number two, is Springfield Development Code Amendment Annexations. This is ordinance number two, an ordinance amending the Springfield Development Code related to annexation, adopting a severability clause and a savings clause and providing an effective date. This is a first reading and no action. Haley Campbell is here for this item.
Good evening, counselors and mayor. As Neil mentioned, this is the first reading for this code amendment project, but I came to you last month to, for a work session, so first public hearing. Let's get started. So why is Springfield amending the annexation section of the Development Code? This project would amend the annexation section of the Springfield Development Code in an effort to enable efficient, timely review that aligns with state law. The amendments will clarify the application and initiation types. It amends Springfield Development Code five-point-seven-point-one-two-five for initiation method requirements and application requirements to clarify what documents are required for the various annexation applications. It improves efficiency and timeliness for staff and officials to process applications and make a decision. Changes to Springfield Development Code five-point-seven-point-one-fifteen provide an option where an annexation does not require, but may go to a public hearing. It removes redundant terms in Springfield Development Code five-point-seven-point-one-thirteen and addresses appropriate processes in Springfield Development Code five-point-seven-point-one-fifteen. What is annexation? Annexation is the process by which properties outside the city limits become incorporated into the city and thus can receive city services. The Springfield City Council makes the decision whether to approve an annexation request, as we heard from Andy this evening. If approved, the UF-ten or urbanizable fringe overlay zoning district no longer applies. For example, if your property is currently zoned R-one, UF-ten, once annexed, it will be zoned R-one. Some service providers also change upon annexation. For example, if the annexation area is within a water supply district or rural fires district, the city will process a request to withdraw the annexing territory from the water district or fire district. If the property is not already within Willamette Park and Recreation District's service boundary, it will be annexed into the district at the same time the property is annexed to the city. The first topic we're going to talk about tonight clarifies the three main types of initiation methods for annexation. They are owner consent, triple majority, and double majority in the code. To understand the differences between the types, consider that an owner consent annexation is when all of the owners and not less than half of the electors consent to an annexation. A triple majority is when more than half the owners, who also own more than half the land in the contiguous territory and represent more than half of the assessed value of the property, consent to the annexation. A double majority is when a majority of the electors and owners of more than half the land consent to the annexation. Note that city council may initiate annexation of public right-of-way or other public land contiguous to the city limits. Topic two, cover Springfield Development Code five-point-seven-point-one-fifteen, review. This section was amended by adding three types of owner consent annexations, which do not require a public hearing, unless council chooses to defer action until after holding a public hearing. It includes a review process for double majority and triple majority annexation applications. And for consistency and clarity, we move the recommendation to city council and appeals process to this section as they are part of the review process. Following the city council work session on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, the proposed code amendments incorporated the council's recommendation, which include a few options where no public hearing is required for owner consent annexations, as you see on the screen. The first option, A, is when the territory is a single lot or parcel, zoned R-one and designated LDR that is less than ten thousand square feet. Or B, for territory that is served by a failing septic system. Or C, when the territory does not include the Hillside Overlay District, Floodplain Overlay District, or contain a water quality limited water course, locally significant wetland, or riparian area. However, the exception to a public hearing for a single lot or parcel under ten thousand square feet in the R-one district and designated LDR, or for territory with a failing septic, still applies, regardless of if the property contains a natural resource or natural hazard. In that case, no public hearing is required. Most annexations include withdrawal from a special service district, such as Rural Fire Protection District or a Water District, that are subject to the public hearing requirements in ORS two-twenty-two-point-five-two-oh. Withdrawal can be done concurrently with an annexation that is adopted after a public hearing or any time after the annexation under the process in ORS two-twenty-two-point-five-two-four. The withdrawal has notice requirements similar to an annexation public hearing for newspaper notice and posted notice. Springfield Development Code five-point-seven-point-one-sixty, Withdrawal from Special Service Districts, has been simplified and clarified to distinguish the types of withdrawals from special service district options, to clarify the review procedures that apply to withdrawal of territory from special districts, and to provide public hearing notice requirements. Topic three is about Springfield Development Code five-point-seven-point-one-two-five, Annexation Initiation and Application Submit. This section was amended by breaking down the initiation method and application requirements by application type pursuant to either owner consent, double majority, or triple majority. Again, following the city council work session on September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, the proposed code amendments shown in attachment two in your packet tonight incorporated the council's recommendation that notice is given to owners and occupants within one hundred feet of the perimeter of the property to be annexed. The requirements in the existing code is that notice of a public hearing is mailed to owners and occupants of properties located within three hundred feet of the perimeter of the property to be annexed. The minimum requirement in state law, according to ORS one-ninety-seven-point-seven-nine-seven-two for a local quasi-judicial land use hearing, requires that notice of the hearing is provided to the applicant and to owners of property within one hundred feet of the subject property to be annexed, where the property is wholly or in part within the urban growth boundary. You may be asking, what standards were not changed with these code amendments? The first is the criteria for approval in Springfield Development Code five-point-seven-point-one-forty. The second is the zoning section in five-point-seven-point-one-fifty. Unincorporated land within the UGB is distinguished from land within the city limits by the addition of the Urban Fringe Overlay District, or UF-ten. The UF-ten Overlay District will continue to cease to apply, and the current zoning will apply when annexation approval is granted. And the third is that annexation is voluntary. The amendments to the Springfield Development Code are subject to a set of approval criteria noted on the screen. Based on the staff report and findings, the code amendments are in conformance with the Metro Plan and Springfield Comprehensive Plan, are consistent with applicable state statutes, and are consistent with applicable statewide planning goals and administrative rules. Thus, the applicable approval criteria are met. Next steps. This request is reviewed as a type four legislative amendment to the Springfield Development Code, which requires review and a recommendation by the Planning Commission and adoption of ordinance by city council. The Springfield Planning Commission issued a recommendation on August sixth, twenty twenty-four. The next step is this public hearing. Council may decide if they should continue the public hearing to allow for additional public comment or close the public hearing. If council decides to close the public hearing, staff requests that they begin deliberations to determine if there are any desired changes to the recommended amendments. The city's council is scheduled to hold a second reading for adoption on November fourth.
Are there any questions before I open the hearing? All right. I'm going to go and open the public hearing. I have one card for this item. It's Alia.
Hey there. Alia Beta, thirty-one-twenty, Oriole Street. So I am here, same thing I've been here for since around June, to ask for more consideration instead of less when it comes to annexation code changes. I will say, I'm a little surprised to hear that after the work session, it was dropped back from three hundred to one hundred because during the Planning Commission meeting, there were quite a few neighbors here, there were quite a few comments. People were not in support of that, so I'm kind of surprised to see that it changed. I don't think anyone thought it was going to change after the Planning Commission meeting, so you may not get a lot of feedback on that because people weren't aware that that had changed since the Planning Commission meeting. Overall, I think everyone knows what happened with the Game Farm Road annexation. Looking at that as an example, it was a pretty hot topic for a lot of people. People were upset. You have a lot of people in that neighborhood now who are considering selling their homes and moving out of Springfield because of what happened with that and what they're likely going to have in their backyards. Coming to that, to those meetings, we learned a lot. We learned a lot about annexation. We learned a lot about what was allowed, what wasn't allowed. We were told that can't be part of the discussion. Okay, that's part of the annexation criteria. Got to, got to bring it to that table. So imagine our surprise. We see annexation code changes. We were super stoked. We were like, okay, now's the time. We can't undo what happened with Game Farm Road, but we can maybe talk more about different kinds of considerations, concrete considerations, not just, I don't want this in my backyard. I'm against anything being built anywhere, but more concrete kind of considerations. And what we learned through that was that, no, there needs to be a change to the comprehensive plan, so can't ask for it through this avenue. We inquired about what it takes to make a change to the comprehensive plan and then their statewide planning goals. It is extremely expensive. That is not accessible to the people of Springfield. Our commissioners aren't involved, so I'm here to ask you to please consider taking that up, if not a part of these changes, using your general powers to take up a looking at what can be added to the annexation criteria, concrete things, like previous use of the property, toxicity, traffic impacts to nearby neighborhood, concrete things, not just, hey, we don't want this done. Asking or requiring people in your community to have to have thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars and have to have almost what would be a second mortgage on a house to say, hey, can we look at these comprehensive plans and make more changes to the annexation code? Is really, it's just not accessible to us. And we are not represented, and your community members are feeling downtrodden and defeated. And people want to move, and I don't think we want that for our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have no other cards. Neil, do we have anybody online?
No hands online for this item.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and see if anybody has any questions. All right, this is first reading, no action tonight. Next item, please.
Mayor, the next item is Business from the Audience.
I have two cards for Business from the Audience. The first one is David Willis and then Jason Prophet.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. This is really a follow-up to the pears that I gave several weeks ago, and our schedules were not able to come together. So this is the testimony I wanted to give that night. My name is David Willis and I reside in Springfield. I'm here as the volunteer Springfield Communications Director, excuse me, of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. These small gift boxes of pears are representative of one-point-five-million pounds of pears harvested by hand, taking twelve thousand volunteer hours by volunteers over two to three weeks in late summer from one of our church welfare farms. Our pear farm is located in Medford, and it has twenty thousand trees and fifty-five acres. One hundred thousand pounds of pears are distributed to food pantries in Ashland, Medford, Wairika, Grants Pass, Coos Bay, Portland, Roseburg, and Kalamath Falls. The rest of the pears are shipped to Idaho where they're canned, and the cans are distributed for free to communities, families, and people in need all over the world, addressing needs such as food insecurity, malnutrition, and disaster relief. Hopefully, these pears can convey to you our thanks and acknowledgement for you, your paid and also non-paid staff and volunteers and everything that you do. We also want to thank you for encouraging, honoring, and protecting the freedom of religion in our community. We also are excited to extend an invitation to you to the open house in dedication to the Willamette Valley Temple located in the Gateway Area, hopefully by the end of next year. The monies for this important building come from voluntary donations of tithing and fast offerings from our church members all over the world, even those from the most humble circumstances. We believe that strong families and diverse religious communities and values have been the cement that solidifies society and are also the bedrock of principles that guide people of all ages. I have found the people of faith try to consistently follow this admonition. We believe in being honest, true, chaste, benevolent, virtuous, and in doing good to all men and women. Indeed, we may say that we follow the admonition of the Apostle Paul. We believe all things, we hope all things, we have endured many things and hope to be able to endure all things. If there is anything virtuous, lovely, or of good report or praiseworthy, we seek after these things. Myself and others have seen people change, including ourselves, in marvelous ways. We do believe that through the atonement and grace of Christ, all humankind may be saved by obedience to the laws and ordinances of the Gospel of Jesus Christ. These pears are just a small token of our appreciation for your service and the many hours you give to our community. We hope you know how much you are appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Prophet?
Jason Prophet, the end of Quarry Road. So first, I'm going to start on Sixth and South Ave. You're going to see some railroad workers camping over in Old Railway Yard. Those guys are just here to work. They're not going to be, not going to be any issues. So I'm going to start with, I got deterred on Tenth off a centennial during some police activity on Fifth. At three o'clock, that's a, that road is not adequate for all the cars picking the kids up over there. It's, it's not, it's not meant to be that busy. The second, I called in a fire over at the railway yard, and after talking to Eugene, they won't put out warming fires. They won't put out cooking fires. Everything I worked for is on that south hill. I'll put the fires out myself. The Ducks had a pretty good football game here two weeks ago. Listen to the police scanner. There were four calls behind in the queue. I'm glad I wasn't the fan. Listen to the police scanner. There were four calls behind in the queue. I'm glad I wasn't the fifth waiting. It's on that. I called, well, I called the police department for cahoots. Since you guys pushed the campers over on the, on the Booth Kelly now. And I asked for police and she said, take a number and get in line. So right here, we have four in the queue on the, for the fire department and get in line for a police. I'm not gonna sit around and wait. The city's not, doesn't have the structure to grow and provide services. I seen contractors pulling weeds at the Booth Kelly Mill. I'm not paying taxes for contractors. I'm paying taxes for union city workers. And I think that's, that's all I got.
All right, thank you. I don't have any other cards. Neil, do we have anybody online?
No hands for this item.
All right, next item, please.
Next item is resolutions. Resolution number one is the Square One Land Acquisition. And Katie Carroll is here for this item.
All right. Hi again. Katie Carroll, Housing Analyst, here to talk about an application that the city received for funding for land acquisition from Square One Villages. So as you may recall, back in July, the council adopted a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute forgivable loans with developers to purchase land to build income-qualified housing serving households with low incomes. And when we say low incomes, we're talking eighty percent and below the area median income. The funding for those forgivable loans comes from one-time ARPA funds that the city received through an intergovernmental agreement with Lane County. And the council adopted a set of guidelines for staff to use in reviewing requests for land acquisition and awarding those funds on a first-come, first-served basis. The city then received an application from Square One Villages on August first to purchase two, a two-acre property north of Main Street between Thirty Third and Thirty Fifth Streets. The site plan shown on the screen is what Square One's proposing. It's an approximately forty-unit cottage cluster that's a mix of one and two-bedroom units that would all be for that eighty percent or below area median income level and would be available for home ownership through a limited equity co-op and a community land trust model to ensure affordability over an extended period of time. And that's the model that Square One used at the C Street Co-op in Springfield and Peace Village in Eugene. There's more information in your memo and also in their application materials, which your attachment for about limited equity co-op, community land trust model. So per the guidelines that council adopted, a committee of staff from multiple teams and departments reviewed and scored Square One's application against a set of six criteria and found that the application met the city's requirements for being recommended for funding to the city manager. The reason that this is coming before you all is that in the development issues meeting the city held with Square One for its proposal, staff raised concerns about connectivity needs of the neighborhood where this property is located. So the Square One property is shown here on the screen highlighted blue. It is the only undeveloped property in this neighborhood and it has right-of-way stubbed out Thirty Third on its western edge and then Thirty Fourth Street. That's the north end of the property. Currently Thirty Fifth Street is the only access out of the neighborhood for over a hundred homes, mainly off Thirty Fourth and Thirty Fifth Street. Secondary vehicle access is important for emergency services to provide residents a different way to get out of the neighborhood should Thirty Fifth Street at Main get blocked. It also would be helpful to have this connection to improve long-term connectivity of the neighborhood by allowing neighbors from Thirty Second through Thirty Fifth Street to access each other's homes on local streets, especially by bike or on foot. Tyson Park is also in this neighborhood. It's north of the property. It's at kind of the top of the screen. That would be the only other option for making a secondary connection for this neighborhood would be through the park. Willamane recently received a grant and is master planning updates to the park. In the early plan that city staff has seen, there are planned park facilities in the way of both potential connections, so going, extending Thirty Fourth Street and extending Thirty Fifth Street. Willamane also shared that it learned through its engagement for those park updates that neighbors along Thirty Second and Thirty Third Street would like a more direct way to get to the park because right now they have to go all the way down to Main Street or all the way up to, I think it's Commercial Ave, which is even more north than that picture. And that's about a hundred homes off those two streets that are impacted by that. So despite the community need for better connectivity with the proposed middle housing cottage cluster, the city cannot require a road connection through the development approval process. The city can require what is needed to meet fire code, which in this case does not appear to require dedicating a public road. And a little bit of background on why this is, so the Transportation System Plan or the T S P, there's a policy in it that calls for the approximate location of planned local streets to be shown on a conceptual street map. But when the city adopted the T S P in twenty twenty, the council at that time chose not to include the conceptual street map and instead to rely on language in the development code to make those local street connections as development occurred. Subsequent to that, the state passed its middle housing rules and the city folded those into the code. And that prevents the city from requiring those connections to be made unless a subdivision is being proposed, which it's not here. The development code does allow the city to reserve space for future right-of-way through the special street setback provisions, which basically mean that someone can't build in the location of a future street. However, that does not require dedication of right-of-way or construction of a street. And there's also no mechanism in the code for requiring a public access easement in this circumstance. So that's kind of the code side of it. In terms of these funding guidelines, the funding guidelines and the resolution did not give the city manager or staff the authority to consider this question of connectivity and determining whether or not to award these funds. So that's why we're bringing it back to you because council could choose to put a condition on the funding award to address connectivity for the neighborhood. So with that in mind, have come up with different options for the council to consider in how it would like to address this question. So the first option would be to put a condition on the funding that would require Square One to dedicate right-of-way to connect Thirty Third and Thirty Fourth Street through the site. This would preserve the city's ability to build a public street through the site in the future, but the city would not immediately do so. This is the only one of the options I'll present that provides a reasonable opportunity to create a secondary vehicular connection for the homes off Thirty Fourth and Thirty Fifth Street through this site. However, Square One, when we talked to them about this, shared that if this is a condition of the funding, that they will not be moving forward with the project. And their reasoning for this is they're really focused on creating pedestrian-oriented developments. They'd like to put parking on the side, so having a road go through it is sort of counter to that goal. And they did also share some concerns about safety if there were to be a road bisecting the site. So that's option one. Option two would be to condition the funding on a reservation, on the reservation of a public access easement through the site. So in contrast with option one, this would only require Square One to allow for pedestrian bicycle and emergency access through the site. It would help to address what Willamane heard about neighbors wanting to have better access to the local park. However, it would not address the concerns for a vehicular secondary access for the homes off Thirty Fourth and Thirty Fifth Street. Square One has shared that they are amenable to this option. And then the third option would be to not put any additional conditions on this funding. If council wanted to go this direction, you could just make a motion to send the application back to the city manager for a decision. And then that would be Nancy's purview to make the decision with the staff recommendation to fund it. And there would not, the city would just, if this came through in development, we would just process it under the development requirements, which would mean there would not be any right-of-way or public access easement required. And that's what I have happy to answer questions.
Joe?
Thank you, Mayor. So, thank you very much for that, Katie. So to me, okay, option one to me is not an option because we gotta have that project. And it's kind of ironic that just a few minutes ago or an hour ago, we're talking about allowing provisioning vehicles that aren't even made to have long-term housing and allowing them throughout the city and then turn right around and, and create a condition which this project would move forward. So to me, option one is, is not, is not even worth considering. Option two, I think, is worth considering, except for with the caveat that, well, I'll add, Willamane, you mentioned that, that there was some engagement with Willamane and I'm not sure how far that went on what they're, whether they are willing to talk about this issue that the neighborhoods have talked about. But I kind of looking at that as if that's a Willamane thing and not a city thing and that they should, and I would recommend, at least we can encourage them to try to find an amicable solution to that part of the issue. But we're really not in the driver's seat for that, and I don't even think the developer is as well. So I'm looking at, at potentially option two. And the way it's written is that it's just simply states here, let's see if I can get it right. Or I messed that up here. So option two is basically says to negotiate or have the city manager negotiate and execute a forgivable loan agreement with Square One Villages. But it's kind of open-ended by it says to includes a reservation for public access easement, but it doesn't seem to have guardrails on those, on that particular motion or that particular consideration. And I think that it's been said that the developer is, is amicable, but I think they're amicable to no more than twenty feet because their design, as you said earlier, their design is stressing bicycle pedestrian movement throughout that area, throughout the development. And of course, allow twenty feet would also allow for EMS access. So I think that I would, I would encourage option two, which will give us that access and allow for that, that project to move forward. And then option three with no dedication or public access easement still to me is, is, still leaves it open-ended, but I think we need to know that, that needs to be known that a regular developer would not be subjected to these types of conditions under the middle housing code. Am I correct? Because, different monies?
Correct. So just clarifying one piece of that that I think had been unclear to Square One until today, but we were finally able to connect with them. So this special street setback is a requirement, no matter if they're pursuing the funds or not, and would require that they cannot build within a fifty-seven-foot setback for the right-of-way area. It sounds like from talking to current planning, they could apply for a variance to reduce that down, but that space would still be wider than the twenty feet that they would need for the emergency access, if that makes sense. So even if they didn't dedicate, they couldn't build in it.
So, so you're saying if they request the variance, the variance, if they request it, would still require greater than twenty feet?
Yes.
And how, how greater?
I haven't Mark come up?
It's my presenting partner today.
Ready to go? Counselor's Mark Rust for the record, current planning manager. So I did have some email communications back and forth, as well as trading messages with Andrew, the assistant director, I think, with Square One today. What the code allowed, what the code requires is what Katie said. It's a fifty-seven-foot wide corridor that would include not only the right-of-way but the setback from that right-of-way that could not be built in through a type one or minor variance. They can ask for a thirty percent reduction of that, which would get it down to right about forty-foot wide. And that's a fairly straightforward type of variance. We do have a major variance that would be much more difficult and would go through a public hearings process through the Planning Commission. The minor variance is much more straightforward. It's a staff decision. And that thirty percent reduction down to forty feet is so. From my perspective, unless they really wanted to reach further and try and go through a major variance, the likely outcome is reducing it to a forty-foot width corridor.
So if you talk to the potential, well, to St. Vincent and the developer, is that forty foot, if it's allowed, is that going to be a deal killer? Or would they still be able to move forward?
So as of the latest email exchange, it sounds like with the, assuming the forty feet were achievable, that they are thinking they would not lose units. They could do some minor rearranging and still reach that forty unit count.
Okay, so they're, so they're, they're solid with that. Everybody's clear on that, that they can, that this project could move forward. And you folks will provide them guidance on how to make that happen with the variance. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that would, that would, that would fall into the parameters under the second option?
Yes. And then just to clarify on the third option, I, I might have just misunderstood what you were saying, but the third option wouldn't be any public access easement or right-of-way dedication. To clarify, that's what option three is.
Oh, so we could, we could say we're not gonna require any public ass, access or easement and project can move forward without that?
Correct, but they would still be subject to that special street setback and they would still be subject to meeting fire code, which could be done by providing the twenty-foot easement through the site for emergency access.
So we would be able to do, I'm just trying to find out what would be the best motion and allow for the product to move forward and make it amicable for the developer. It sounds now then, based on what you just said, that option three with no dedication of public access easement would be probably the best route for them and for us? Is that, am I reading that correctly?
And Joe, we're gonna, the city attorney's queuing up to get in here.
Please, yeah, please.
Counselor Pictionary, I just wanted to clarify that the motions tonight are really about whether the city council agrees to award the loan to, to do the funding for this project, either with the dedication of public access easement or as the existing guidelines. Some of the things you're talking about are important to that decision, but they would be resolved later. The way the program works is the funding is awarded, the developer goes about making a plan, and within three years, they come in with an updated development plan. Some of those details you're talking about in terms of the width, the variance, those items would be addressed at that time, but we purposely kept the decision now for the council to be high-level in terms of, do you want to have something specific in this loan that allows for this connectivity? Or do you just want it to be under the existing guidelines?
Oh, I see. Okay, I, I appreciate that guidance. And it looks though that option three, correct me if I'm wrong, Mary B., that if we went with option three, that would be providing the greatest amount of flexibility for both the city and the plant and the developer, correct?
I think I would agree with that in terms of for the developer, but I think the city perspective is more up to the council and weighing its policy priorities.
Okay, so before I open this up, because I think we're gonna have a ton of questions, so can you walk, walk me through again? So if we go with the right-of-way dedication option, how wide's the street? Well, okay, it's, it's more complicated than that. How, how, how wide of, how wide's the right-of-way at that point? Because I think I heard you guys say two, two things.
So I'll just chime in here. Probably under option one, the, the minimum right-of-way width, and I'll look to Michael, is it still sixty feet with a forty-one-foot wide street? And I'll look to Michael, is it still sixty feet with a forty-one-foot wide street?
Right.
So I'll just try and repeat. Basically, minimum right-of-way width of forty-one feet.
Okay.
Under option one.
And there's lost units in option one.
I'd have to defer to the developer or to.
To defer to them too, but based on what they said about the public access easement, which would also be that approximately forty feet.
They, in, in the email today, he agreed that leaving a forty-foot wide clear width would allow them to do the project with no, no loss of units. And that could be either basically under option one or option two.
Okay, so the issue, and then I'll let the rest of the council jump in, is that if we went with option one, it would be a public street eventually someday. And their issue is from a vision perspective, they, they really don't want to separate their development that way. Okay, got it. Anybody else? Go ahead, Victoria.
Okay. Um, the problem with option one and with doing that is that we know the likelihood of getting that street is gonna be slim to none. Let, let, let's all just be open about that, okay? We do irrevocable petitions all the time for, uh, for improvements and we don't get them. Um, I find it interesting that we're doing a, a forgivable loan for someone that, and for a development, which I appreciate that we're getting housing, um, but we're, this lot was set up with the intention of that connecting. If you look at it, that's, that neighborhood needs a connection and that's why we do that. And so it's frustrating to me that we're in a world where middle housing, um, has come down from the state and they just completely disregard infrastructure and things that we need in our communities. And they allow housing and then these are things that we're gonna deal with ten and twenty and thirty years down the road. So I'll just say that to begin with. But the truth is, is that I don't see why we would do that on option one when we know we're not gonna actually build the road. I would be more open to option two, because at least we would get that pet access. At least we would get the, the fire, um, the, the fire right-of-way that they need. And we would be tying those together and then, and then you guys can deal with how you want to make them do that, but it would fit into their thing. Typically with housing, we don't look at whether or not they're gonna lose lots or whether they're gonna lose a, a house. Uh, that's unfortunate, but we do that with, with stormwater and everything else. If you're building a subdivision, you have to do infrastructure. If that means you lose a lot, unfortunately, that's what happens when you're trying to better your community. Um, so I'm okay with number two. I'm definitely not okay with number three, because then that's doing nothing. So.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, I, I have a little bit of a different spin on it, but I'm landing in the same place. And, um, as many of you know, you know, the Mark Holametta's development is in Ward Three and I go by there all of the time. And they have a lot of street connectivity and there are so many cars on that. Um, that I think it's actually challenging for emergency vehicles to get through. So one of the things that I appreciate about option two is that it isn't for, for cars. So it will actually probably be quicker and more efficient if you need to get a fire truck or emergency vehicle onto something that doesn't have a bunch of cars parked on it or on it. So, and, and I'm, I'm also like, I, I agree with Counselor Doyle that, you know, because of choices that were made in the past, possibly we didn't do the things. But this is gonna be, we're gonna see more and more of this, because we don't have a whole lot of land in Springfield. And we really want to encourage this creative kind of building. And so I'm open to seeing what does a neighborhood like this look like, where we lean into, to, to their vision and make sure that the emergency vehicles can get into it. So I'm landing it too for a few other reasons, but that's where I'm at too.
All right. Anybody else? Uh, Michelle?
I appreciate all of the conversation and the, the insight from folks that really understand how this all works. Um, and before that, I was landing kind of in, in number two, but I definitely now I'm more solid on, on number two.
Beth?
Yeah, I, I agree as well. Um, number two was the one that stuck out in my mind initially and I was glad to hear the comments and the questions um, revolving around it, um, just to give that, uh, pedestrian, bike and emergency access. And the more connectivity through the neighborhood. So I'm, I'm definitely number two.
The best option for everybody involved, the city, the developers and the public and public safety.
Yeah, and I think my take here is that especially in this neighborhood, connectivity is really challenging. Like this is, and this is one of those areas that as we develop land and we give away, you know, and address, address land issues, then we're gonna continue to look for places to go, hey, you should have more than one way to get out of your neighborhood. Um, so I was a little disappointed that the, uh, that, you know, number one is not a plausible option. But I think Victoria may be right, that even if that we settled on that one, that street's probably never getting built. So I, I will be happy with two. Joe? And then we're ready for a motion if you're ready to.
Um, just very quickly after this quick comment is that, uh, this is not a normal development. It is not a matter of losing something for money type thing. It's a matter of maximizing how many people be able to live on this property. And so that's, that's the angle of which I'm coming from. If, if I, if this was a for-profit developer for me, I wouldn't even be having this conversation and, and I would totally agree with what Victoria's saying. As far as, hey, a street's a street. We need to have access and fully build it out. That's the way it is. That's what developers have to pay for. But this is very unique and I think that we need to do everything we can to make it happen. Um, I, I don't think that they'll move forward if they end up having to save forty feet. I don't, I think it'll kill the project, but I'll go ahead and make the motion and we'll see how this project develops if, if it does. So I'd like to make a motion to, uh, move to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a forgivable loan agreement with Square One Villages for the purpose, for the purchase of property located south of C Street and between Thirty-third and Thirty-Fifth Streets. Map number seventeen dash zero-two dash three-one dash three-one, tax lot twenty-two hundred for the purposes of developing income qualified housing that includes a reservation of a public access easement.
Second.
Joe, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Blackwell.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
Aye.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Yes.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero noes. Next item, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is any business from the council.
I think we're good. Next item, please. Any business from the city manager?
No business, thank you.
Any business from the city attorney?
Just one quick item to note. Uh, today I got to meet Lily Cras, who is Christina's daughter.
Hey.
Is, uh, one month old today and back up at her fighting weight, at her birth weight. So, um, anyway, Christina's doing well and she'll be out, uh, through most of November. But, uh, things are going well and Lily is doing all the things the little babies do. She looks great. So.
She's studying for the.
She's, uh, yeah, she's done a lot of legal work already. Yeah.
Christina, our best.
I will.
All right. Sure. Thank you.